Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to all those joining us today for June 10th, 2021 Downtown Parking Committee. We're glad you're with us. If I can go ahead and call for the roll call for those in attendance, please.
Okay, Chair Penner?
Here.
Vice Chair Ed France?
Here.
Matt LaBrie?
Here.
Andrew Newkirk?
Here.
Sean Pratt?
Here.
Barbara Silver?
Here.
And Ruben Zarate appears to be absent.
All right, thank you, Ms. Clark, for that. And again, thank you, and welcome to all those who are joining us today. We appreciate it. Do we have any proposed changes to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda today.
All right, thank you. Seeing that, we'll move through to our announcements. Ms. Clark, if you could let us know what we are announcing today.
Sure, thanks. So I am happy to announce that Brian Bossy, who is the Waterfront Business Manager, has been appointed the interim Downtown Plaza and Parking Manager on special assignment. So he's still going to be doing a bit of double duty, hanging on to his duties down at the waterfront. We're very happy to have him up here with us for the next few months. So Brian, you want to come on and go ahead and introduce yourself?
Sure. Thank you, Sarah. Good morning, everybody, committee members. Thanks for that nice introduction. I'm happy to be here working with the Downtown Parking operation. I've been here two weeks, and I'm already impressed by the depth and breadth of what they do and the services they cover. I don't think it'll come as any surprise to you folks, since you work with them so often, but this is a very, very high-performing group. It should also come as no surprise that they're extremely understaffed at the current time and overworked. So that's where I'm hoping to come in and lend a hand and take a number of items off their shoulders and let them proceed with what they do best. A little bit about me, I've been with the city for almost 22 years. The first 12 I spent with the Redevelopment Agency is the Housing and Redevelopment Manager, which is where I met a number of you folks. It's nice to see a number of you who I haven't seen in quite some time. At the Redevelopment Agency, I worked on affordable housing and downtown revitalization projects. When redevelopment agencies were dissolved back in 2011, 2012, I moved down to the waterfront, where I'm the, as Sarah mentioned, the business manager. And I managed the department's $16 million budget. I also managed a property management program, which is 61 leases and over 250,000 square feet of leasable space. And I also managed their parking operations, which includes 10 lots and about 3,000 spaces. So I am very happy to be here. I'll be filling both roles for the time being and doing the best I can to support them in what they do. And again, I'm a great group, happy to be here. So thank you, Sarah.
Well, thank you, Mr. Bossy, and welcome. I think with that list, we can certainly say you're well-qualified and well-experienced, well-heeled. And in many areas of the city, we appreciate that, and we appreciate you jumping in and helping out. We do have a great team, but we always can use an extra, good extra minds, ears, and eyes to help us with all the things we have to do with. So thank you and welcome.
Great. Thank you very much.
Any other announcements, Ms. Clark?
No other announcements this morning.
All right. With that, we will move on to item number five. This is on the agenda as public comment. This is an opportunity for people of the, our members of the public to make a public comment regarding something that is in our jurisdiction but not currently on today's agenda. We've been limited to two minutes of time, and Ms. Clark will explain how you can make public comment at this time.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Penner. So public comment on GoToWebinar is made using the app, the program that we have. So if you look at your control panel, you'll see that little hand with a green arrow. Go ahead and use that. Click on that when you want to make a public comment on an item. That's the Raise Lower Your Hand button. Once you have it up, you'll also see it change to the Lower Your Hand. So if you decide you don't want to speak, or you'd like to change something, go ahead and use that, and we'll let you know when it is your turn to speak. So I do actually see one hand raised this morning for a public comment. Tom Foley, you can go ahead and you should be able to speak now. Do you want to unmute yourself?
Good morning, Chairman Penner and members of the committee. I'd like to address two issues in my two minutes. I'm the managing member of the El Centro Building, which is adjacent to City Parking Lot Number Nine. There's a dangerous condition, and I want to go on the record on this, that's happening in the lower level of City Parking Lot Number Nine, in that multiple times during the day, young men on skateboards are in that area. And they're also, over Memorial Day weekend, I called the police because they were actually coming down the ramp, the entrance ramp to the second level off East Canopodito Street, and they would not leave. So I called the police. Police did respond, and all the kids saw them and ran out the back way out towards Pearl Street, through the alley next to South Coast Deli. So you've got a dangerous condition. I think the solution is to put up cameras. Years ago, you put up cameras in City Parking Lot Two, when I made a lot of complaints, because one of my female employees that worked at night, and as you know, in the fall, it's very dark, and had parking privileges on the lower level of City Lot Two, was assaulted. And so cameras got put in, and it really cleaned up that situation. So I'd ask you to do that at City Parking Lot Nine, and patrol it more to keep the kids out of the lot. Second, there's been a lot of discussion in the press about using city parking lots for addressing the homeless problem. Yes, the homeless problem is serious in Santa Barbara, but I would remind this commission and committee that the building owners that are adjacent to the parking lots contributed financially to the construction of the parking lots and the ongoing operations. And we all have women tenants, women employees, but do work nights, women in professional capacities, particularly lawyers and accountants during their busy season, work at night when it's dark. And it's very dangerous to put homeless people in an active parking lot when women are coming out, and men are coming out to get in their cars after full day's work. So I would hope that you will speak out on that issue. It's not the appropriate place to put homeless people at night in downtown city parking lots. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foley. Do we have any other public speakers wishing to speak?
Okay, if anybody else wishes to speak, go ahead, use the Raise Your Hand button. Mr. Foley, you can go ahead and mute yourself. I don't see any other public comment, Mr. Penner.
All right. Well, thank you very much. At that time, at this time, we will close public comment, and we will move on to item number six, which is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of May 13th, 2021. Entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, I would move that we adopt the minutes as presented.
Thank you. I have a first from Mr. LaBrie. Mr. France, you have something to add?
I would just like to second that.
That's what I was hoping you'd be adding. Thank you. All right. With that, we have a first and a second. Are there, is there any discussion regarding the motion? Seeing none, we'll do the roll call, please.
Vice Chair France?
Yes.
Matt LaBrie?
Yes.
Andrew Newkirk?
Yes.
Sean Pratt?
Yes.
Barbara Silver?
Yes.
And Chair Penner?
I vote yes. Thank you.
Okay, motion carries.
Okay, we'll move on to our topics of the day, which is first item number seven, Budget and Parking Operations Update. Ms. Clark, I think that's your item.
It is my item. Thank you very much. So this is our monthly update on the status of our budget, occupancy, and operations out in the lot. So if you can just go ahead and move on to the next slide, please. And you can move on one more. Great. So here's what you're, what we're looking at. Ooh, we go ahead back. So here's what we're looking at for May. Again, the orange lines are May of 2021. That's in comparison to May of 2020, which is the blue, and May of 2019, which is more like a normal year, which is in the green. So you can see, obviously, this time last year, we were basically completely closed in the lots. We didn't have staff out there. We were still in a lot of the more stricter lockdowns and closures due to COVID. So that's why you see those occupancies being way down. We have, of course, recovered from them. Many more things are open, and we're expecting that pretty much everything is going to be opened up, beginning on the 15th, again, per the state and per the governor. So those occupancies are beginning to recover. You'll notice on Saturdays, for example, we're starting to inch back up to where we would be in a more normal year, which is encouraging, but we are still off fairly considerably. So if you want to move to the next slide, please. So the same goes for revenues. You'll see in 2020, obviously, we didn't make any money. We didn't have staff in the lots collecting revenue at the time, but in a more normal year, 2019, the green bar, we collected about $436,000 for the month of May. This past May, we only collected, it looks like $261,000. So revenues have begun to recover, but they are still off very substantially from where they would be in a more normal year. And so let's see where this leaves us. Go ahead, next slide, please. So last month, I had some good news to bring to you. We were operating in the black for the first time since the onset of the pandemic. Unfortunately, we weren't able to maintain that for this month going forward. A couple contributing factors. Remember that April was the billing month for the quarterly PBIA assessment billing. So we did have higher, we did have, capture higher revenues from PBIA assessments than we would in the off months. So that was down for May. And then, right now, our financial system is showing that our hourly revenues were off fairly substantially for May, about $100,000 down from the previous month. I think that might not be correct. I think that there is some revenue that has not yet posted back to the month of May, because it's not quite showing all the days in there. So I think there may be an adjustment going down the line, but for now, what we're showing is that we operated $112,000 in the red, and then, once you factor in the capital overall, we used $130,000 of reserves this month to fund our downtown parking operation. Want to move on to the next slide? Okay, so here's that line, that chart that we keep track of every month, showing our expenditures in blue, the revenues in green, and then that red, that all-important red bar, which is our operating net. So you'll see back in April, we were able to just peek our head above zero. Now we've gone down a little bit, but the overall trend does seem to be improving. So if you want to go to the next slide, please. And then, at the last meeting, the committee requested a discussion of reserves and our reserve position. At the beginning of, we started FY '20 with about $7.4 million in reserves. Then with, in Q4, when we got, when we got there and we had those hard closures due to the pandemic, we ended up having to use about $1.5 million of reserves to support our operation. That left us, at the beginning of FY '21, with about seven, with about, excuse me, $5.9 million to start. Unfortunately, as we've discussed each month, you know, we have been relying very considerably on our reserves to support the operation. Right now, I'm projecting that we will use about $3.3, $3.4 million in reserves for this fiscal year, which would leave us with about $2.5 million in total. And that is below what we call the council policy level. So the level that we are required to keep in reserves for disaster and capital reserves. So we are below that line. We've fallen below that line. We are expecting to use a substantial amount of reserves this year. And we expect that, you know, June might be a little bit of a rockier month for us in terms of revenue. And the reason that is, is because we, like a lot of other businesses, are in a serious staffing crunch. You know, Mr. Bossy discussed that we are short-staffed in the office, but where we're really short-staffed is out in the lots. Because we use hourly employees to staff our parking lots, hourly employees are each limited to a maximum of 1,000 hours per year. So once we get towards the end of the year, if they're hitting that limit, we have to take them off the schedule and they can't work anymore. And so because of that, we are actually having to pull back our staffing hours for the month of June. We've eliminated the late shifts at some of our lots, and we aren't going to be able to staff Lot 13 through the remainder of the fiscal year. So unfortunately, there is some revenue that we're going to be losing because of that. We are trying as quickly, as hard as we can to hire. Unfortunately, the job market is very tight, and the city's hiring process can take a bit longer than it would in the private sector. So we're facing some challenges in terms of staffing. You know, it remains to be seen what June is going to end up looking like for us in terms of revenue, you know, but we're continuing to try to recruit and to do everything we can to try to get that staffing up. So that's all I have for you today. If you've got any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Excellent presentation, as always. I'll open up first to questions of the committee, or Ms. Clark? Mr. Newkirk?
Yeah, and apologies, Sarah, if you've kind of explained this before, but when we're below that council policy level, what does that actually mean? What has to happen, or does anything happen?
It doesn't necessarily mean that anything happens. It does mean that we need to work on rebuilding our reserves above council policy. And every time we are going to go forward, for example, if we have a capital project or something like that, that requires funding and requires a use of reserves for funding and requires council approval, that approval has to be made in light of the fact that we are below council policy reserves. So, you know, basically, it sort of puts a, not a hard cap, but it does limit our ability to really do any sort of discretionary spending. We've talked in the past about how we've cut our capital pack, capital program back to really the bare bones, only critical safety needs and very urgent repairs. There are a lot of larger maintenance projects that are important, but that we are not able to fund at this time, because we simply don't have the reserves to support that out of the capital program. So at this point, mostly it means that we have to be extremely cautious in terms of our spending, and we don't have a lot of, a lot of wiggle room in terms of being able to make, you know, more sort of discretionary purchases or maintenance needs that aren't absolutely critical.
Thank you. Anyone else of the committee have any questions, comments? Well, I'll just, yeah, I'll follow up on that comment. I think it just means it's a big red flag when we're below that line. I think it's like a big light that's flashing at you, saying, hey, be careful where you're headed, because you don't have the wherewithal to handle a big event. Now, it's fortunate that we looked at what you showed us. It showed we had a $7 million reserve. And without that reserve in this big event that we just had, we would be really in trouble. So at the end of the day, our reserves, although we had hoped them to go to capital events, and as opposed to just operating the lots, the reserves have done what it had hoped to do. So it reminds us now, as things get, hopefully, back on track, we work hard and hard and hard to get back to some normal level of reserve. So we thank you for that report, Ms. Clark, and we hope to see that trend line stay above that middle zero point and stay in the positive as much as we can. We know you're working hard at that. So thank you. At this time, I'm going to open up public comment for item number seven.
Okay, if anybody would like to make public comment, please use that Raise Your Hand feature. And I'm not seeing any hands raised at this time.
All right, thank you. We'll close public comment. And if there are no other questions from the committee, we will end item seven. And move on to item number eight, Parking Lot Automation.
Thank you, Mr. Penner. So I'm going to bring on Roy Forni, our Parking Supervisor, to discuss this item. You'll recall about two months ago, we brought to you sort of a preliminary plan and some initial details about how Downtown Parking is going to operate, and how we're going to shift our operations under this automated model, with a particular eye towards, of course, always preserving our highest priority, which is customer service. So at that time, we promised we'd come back to you with a more detailed plan. And so Roy Forni is here today to present some of the details of that plan. You were given that plan with your packet this month to review and look through. And so if you have any questions or comments, you can, you know, feel free to ask those. This is a working document. We consider this a working document. You know, we're sort of stepping out into uncharted territory here in terms of really tilting and changing our operational model. And so, you know, we think the most important thing is for us to remain flexible and to be ready to adapt as we go forward and find what works. So again, we can, since we can continue to deliver the high level of customer service that our customers have become used to. So I'm going to hand it off to Roy.
Thank you, Sarah. Good morning, Chair Penner, committee members. As Sarah was saying, going to be going and presenting an overview of our Automated Parking Operational and Staffing Plan. First slide. So as an introduction, we are transitioning to an automated parking model to achieve financial sustainability. Moving towards automation will give us additional parking revenue and will help us cover costs for parking operations and hopefully even assist with the capital improvement, improvements. Automating our system will give us an opportunity to operate with a more expanded time of operations, moving towards that 24/7 model and a closed-loop system, which will help us recover all revenue within the parking lots. This transition is going to help us hopefully push out or postpone the need to raise rates or reduce or eliminate the 75-minute complimentary period. Granted, we know we are in dire straits, and that may have to happen sooner rather than later. It will be a customer-centered parking experience. I'll be going over in depth with the operational strategy, staffing strategy, transitional strategy, as we move forward through this presentation. Next slide, please. Our objective in our operational strategy is to continue to provide excellent customer service as we transition to this automated system. Our goal is to be fully automated by January 2022. Granted, this isn't a firm date. There are a lot of moving pieces to this, but we're most definitely trying to meet that. We are currently increasing our staffing levels now to expand our hours of operation to optimize that revenue collection, placing operators in the kiosks. This model's going to give us, or give our staff, an opportunity to educate our customers on the new payment methods and the new LPR system that should be coming in shortly. As we evaluate the lots in the future and move towards that automation and pulling our operators out of the kiosk, we get closer to expanding those hours of operation, again, moving to that 24/7 parking model. Next slide, please. An important piece to this puzzle is that education to the public to utilize our cashless payment system. As you all know, our customers have now the ability to use a new EMV reader or credit card terminals, along with touchless payment options, Apple Pay, Google Pay, and Samsung Pay. Soon, we're going to be initiating that Sweb mobile payment, which is an online platform for our customers to pay for parking. The new payment options are going to help us move again towards that cashless system. A new billing system is also being researched. This billing system is going to give us an opportunity to work remotely by assisting customers from a command center here in our office. This new web-based billing system would allow us to create promissory notes or bills for those customers who don't have a means to pay or have cash. Customers would receive a bill in the mail and have the ability to pay online and/or in our office. This billing system will hopefully give us greater return for those customers that do not have a means to pay. Next slide, please. The objective for our staffing plan is to maintain a flexible staffing level to ensure the highest level of customer service. Our lot operators will transition out of the kiosk to become a response team member called Lot Monitors, where they'll assist customers by working outside the kiosk in the lot or nearby a kiosk when called upon. They would be called upon by our command center employees, who will monitor intercoms and video footage to check to see when customers are in need. The command center employees will offer verbal instructions to help customers with processing of payments at the, or at the exit columns. Lot operators can also transition to event staff personnel, where they'll assist customers during special events. Our attrition or decrease, attrition or decreasing the staff will occur if and only if we can maintain that proper level of customer service. There'll be no layoffs. And again, this will be done through attrition. Next slide, please. So the objective of our transition plan is to make sure that we have enough staff, again, just to provide that excellent customer service that we've been known for, moving towards that system of being fully automated. There's two different phases that we're looking at. The first phase is the phase that we are currently in, which is this increasing the staffing levels and kiosk operators. So we could, again, just expand our operations now to that old pre-pandemic model, and then just collect fees, maximizing that revenue collection. Our second phase will be, again, transitioning to the automated system, pulling our operators out, and then turning into response team members. Next slide. So in conclusion, there are a lot of moving pieces to this transition. We're most definitely certain of one thing, and that's that we're going to make sure that customer needs are met, that we are doing this through a high level of service and positive customer experience. At this point, I'm going to open it up to questions. Any more details needed regarding our plan?
All right. Thank you. Yes, I'll open. Does the committee have any questions? Mr. Newkirk?
Thanks, Chair Penner. I had a question about the, like, the cash payment or the option to not pay when leaving and then getting the bill. How is the $5, is the $5 a cost recovery? Or how, because like, you could have like a $1.50 bill, and then your service fee is, you know, you know, more than three times what your actual bill would be. So where did the, how did we arrive at the $5 charge?
So thank you for the question, Mr. Newkirk. So at this moment now, again, we are researching this third-party billing system. Original idea right now is to send those bills out without a service charge. If a customer had, you know, for example, a cash payment, we couldn't take it there. Now, if there's, for some reason, another means, or I should say, reason for a customer not to pay, for example, they lost their ticket, they couldn't pay there, then a service charge would be added at that point. But for anybody who was driving out that just didn't, again, have cash at the time, there would be a bill that would be sent out for original fee and not necessarily the service charge. But again, we're still evaluating that, really trying to, part of the research that we're doing now is trying to figure out what that cost would be for us to even create these bills, and how much that would affect our parking operation. So still looking into that. More to come, Mr. Newkirk. Unfortunately, I don't have any more answers than that.
Yeah, I would note, I mean, the way I'm reading that, the bottom of page four, is if they don't pay, so they still, there would be a $5 service charge. So it flagged that. And then, you know, also in that same section, you know, the bill would be sent within, or and then done into customer billing, the bill would be sent within seven days. And then you'd have a total of 21 days, which seems to include that seven-day period to make a payment. So like, we're not even sure that they'll receive the bill yet, because like, if someone's traveling, they might be billed to their home. And then that immediately goes into a citation with the police department. That seems like a short turnaround time. And we don't even know, actually, like, we can't even confirm. I'm assuming these aren't going to be like certified mail. So we can't confirm when the receipt of that bill will be for the user. So like, is that, are these normal time periods? It seems, it seems pretty harsh to then make it into like a law enforcement issue.
Yes. So right now, we are kind of modeling this strategy from what waterfront parking is doing right now. Now, there's most definitely a time period of, again, they would receive a bill in seven days. A second one would go out on the 21st or the 22nd. A second one would go out on the 21st or the 21 days. And there would still be an opportunity to waive fees if necessary. So if a customer, for example, did leave town and was gone for three weeks and they could show proof that they were gone, those things could be dealt with, you know, through, you know, our customer service here in the office. So it is a short time period. Again, we're just, we're just mirroring the model that Waterfront does now, giving that 21 days to pay before it goes to potential more fees. There would be more bills that come out after that. But still plenty of time to discuss and move forward with potentially waiving fees if necessary.
So because the way I read this, it becomes, we essentially send it to the police department as a parking citation after 21 days. So it's then it's not our call about waiving it, then it becomes a police department decision?
I would say no, not necessarily. So the way this works is we work hand-in-hand with the police department, Lori Peterson. They're at the police department. And again, we could still have some say in waiving fees after that 21-day period. So it wouldn't be just where we let it go and it goes to the police department and then we just wave our hands of it. We can most definitely work through and work with customers to make sure that they're being treated properly.
And I would just add to that, Chair Penner, Mr. Newkirk. You know, as Mr. Forney mentioned, we would have the opportunity in the initial 21 days to address any customer complaints or challenges to the bill that they've received. After that, once it goes into the PD process, they also do have a process for challenging citations and adjudicating that. So the customer would have multiple opportunities to contest or to, you know, to ask questions or to try to clarify the fees that are due.
Is this kind of like essentially a 14-day turnaround standard in other localities? I'm thinking like, so I was like, in the Northeast, they have like toll pauses, but there's no toll booth anymore. And they just do an LPR system and they mail you the bill. But I don't think the turnaround was this quick. The expectation of the payment was this quick. It just seems like, I mean, maybe the waterfront does it this way, but that just seems like a really short turnaround time than that to expect payment.
Okay. Thank you for your input and noted. We can certainly discuss making adjustments to those business rules to allow for a longer payment window.
And then I have one question about the, or sorry, Mr. Bossy.
Go ahead, Mr. Newkirk. Mr. Chair, Mr. Newkirk, I can chime in. It works very well for the waterfront. You know, people are expected to pay when they leave the parking lot. So that's the expectation. So a 21-day, you know, saying a 21-day pay period is is a little bit much. They're expected to pay on the way out. If something happens and they can't, then we run a 21-day process and it works really well for us. Most of the issues are cleaned up within those 21 days and people pay within the next couple of days because they have it in their heads that, oh yeah, I got to get back, I got to pay this, pay this bill. So it has worked really well for us. That 21 days is just a nice buffer for customer service. When you get a citation with the police, you don't have that opportunity. So this gives us a little more leeway and flexibility. Of course, if somebody's traveling and goes back to Germany, Germany and it's a rental car, that's a whole different issue. But it generally works really well for us down there.
Did you, and are you guys cashless now?
No, no, we do a little, but 80, 80 to 85% is card. So it's not a lot of cash.
I guess, yeah, like I'm just thinking because we're now eliminating the use of cash. So if someone doesn't have the means to pay other than cash, like they could actually pay when they're leaving. So to me, it's like a little bit different moving forward where it's like they could pay, but we're just not allowing them to. And so to me, it's like we should be really more accommodating than in the instances now where like we would accept cash, but they have absolutely no means of paying. That's.
Agreed. And as Mr. Forney said, you know, this is a work in progress. So there are these little tweaks that we're going to have to focus in. I think the big, as Mr. Forney rolled through, you know, we've got a good plan rolling this out, but there are going to be tweaks that we need to focus on in the next couple of months. And we can definitely look at this some more.
Thank you. And then the other, I guess, question, and maybe this will just need to be worked out over time is the, you know, in reading this, the one thing I could envision is like bottlenecks when people need to contact the command center. So it's like, is there like a vision that there's going to be like multiple people working, like multiple different like operators at the command center? So like if there's, you know, someone at one site that needs to contact because they don't have a payment method and then there's an accessibility concern at another lot, we can handle like multiple inquiries? Because I think that to me is like, one concern is, you know, getting jammed up at the exit because of someone communicating with the command center.
Great question, Mr. Newkirk. Yes, the plan at least right now is, again, we're going to do this in very very slow steps. So that operator would get pulled out of the kiosk but be there at the parking lot. So there's going to be multiple ways to help the customer, one of which would be that response team member there at the parking lot that can help assist them and/or somebody here from the command center where we will have multiple workstations for them. You know, and if it need be for, you know, three, four, five people in the command center, if that's what's needed. So again, a work in progress. The plan isn't to just put one person here in this office trying to, you know, help the entire parking system run. Now, we'll have people, start off with people out in the lot, response team members. Again, if a lot is showing that it needs a lot of assistance, we're going to keep that person there. If it's another lot that's a little slower and it works out pretty well, then we could start pulling that person away. And maybe now it's one person working multiple lots. But it is going to happen in those steps where, again, an operator gets pulled out of the kiosk, they're there at the parking lot to make sure and ensure we don't get those bottlenecks and they're just, you know, be chaos at the parking lot.
Thank you. Let me ask a couple of questions to follow up to Mr. Newkirk on the issue of cashless. And I understand the complications with that, that it's a big change. To be clear, we're still having kiosk operators for quite some time. We're not making this change just all kiosk operators going out, correct?
That is correct. We would put, you know, information out to the public that would be moving to that model, but we would keep our operators in the kiosk to help educate our customers. So that would, that would stay in place again. And I know we gave the state of January 2022. But if that doesn't work, then we could push that date out. Again, I didn't want that to be a firm date. That is just what we were, our goal is what we were aiming for. But if we needed to just move that out and keep our operators there up until we feel we can get to the point of where we can go cashless and not have a person there, that's what we're going to do.
Thank you. And then I appreciate also the concern of, you know, the timeframe for returning or not being able to pay in cash and the timeframe to get that back in the fee. And you are researching the idea of, you know, what that fee really should be. We're proposing a $5 fee to cover our costs. That may change. Or I don't know if it would make sense to have a a period, once we start going cashless, the kiosk operators are no longer there and we provide a six-month or 12-month window of time that there will be no service fees due on those payments and that after that time. So it's sort of an education period, people coming to the lots realizing, oh, I need to have another method to pay. Because I want to ask a question about the prepaid cards. Someone who only has cash, does not have a credit card, who does frequent our lots would have the opportunity to purchase a prepaid card. Is that still a plan?
That is correct, Chair Penner. Yes. So any of our customers that do frequent the parking lots will have that ability to come to our office here, pay cash to purchase a prepaid card and then be able to use that prepaid card out in the parking lots. There has been discussion of us selling them at our kiosks as well. So there's a lot of pieces that we're going to end up moving forward with. We're just, again, a little bit slow over a process to try to make sure that this works correctly.
And do we, remind me, is that prepaid card something that can be refilled by sending in, so again, if I pay by cash or I only have a check and I send you a check to buy a $50 card, can I then send you later another check to fill that card back up? Do we have the capability?
Yes. So the answer to that is yes, most definitely. And right now, we are currently, the process is we have customers call up and they could actually provide us their credit card number. And then from there, put the amount on their prepaid card. So it most definitely is a possibility.
But I'm trying to deal with the person that doesn't have a credit card, who can only either give you a check or come into our office and pay by cash. You know, could they then refill their card? Ms. Clark seems to want to add something to that.
Oh, I just wanted to know that one of the nice things about the upgrades that we already installed in sort of phase one of this project is that we can now recharge prepaid cards remotely. Previously, we had to actually physically have that in our hand and stick it into the coder and have that that card recoded for the new charge. But now we can do that remotely. And so that's nice. I hear what you're saying about somebody who doesn't have a credit card to pay. Unfortunately, obviously, we couldn't process that over the phone or through an online order. But that person can come into our office or can mail us payment to get a refill on their credit card or on their, excuse me, prepaid card.
Thank you. That's, that's helpful information to know. One other question that I'll let others ask. The plan here that we're putting forth and Mr. Newkirk asked a couple of good questions. Are we seeing this as a, is this sort of the hopes for the final document? Are you looking for these comments and then want to make adjustments to it? I'm sort of asking, you're indicating that there's some fluidity to this. So I'm trying to get what opportunities you want from us to make comments or changes to this document? Is that the goal?
So we did bring this to you today so that the committee could review it and make comments on it. So certainly, that's our here for, we welcome any and all feedback.
All right. Thank you.
And this is, like I said, this is really a working document for us.
You did, you did say that earlier. So thank you. I guess that was my question. And you, if I were paying attention earlier to that word, I would have heard that. Okay, I saw, are there any other members of the committee that have any comments on the document? Mr. France.
Thank you, Chair Penner. Thank you, Mr. Forney. I just want to appreciate you all taking this on. We've been talking about it for about a year and a half, for two years, but with a lot of trepidation. And especially just with the pandemic, it's like, this is clear. We need to move in this direction. And of course, the budget update just before this item, like what a great indication of, you know, we don't have much margin, which we're for error here. You know, what you're working on is something that we need to be able to sustain this operation. So thank you for that. A quick comment, I just want to say, I think it's really important that we're highlighting some of these challenges with cashless because it's going to come up. But at the same time, I think we're doing due diligence on something that's going to be not that frequent of an occurrence, you know, kind of like as Mr. Bossy mentioned.
Hey, Ed, your connection is spotty. So we're missing about half of what you're saying. So I don't know if that's the case, Mr. France, or can't hear you right now. Your connection's going poorly.
In area of a ton of cost.
Mr. France. Well, we're just.
We're losing it.
Your connection is really spotty. So we're not really able to hear what you're saying, Mr. France. So I don't know if you want to log back in.
It makes sense to me that you all are doing like such great work to set this up for success. Oh, no, I'm sorry. My internet's not, not working well. So I'll, I'll just appreciate the work that you're doing. Thank you.
I'm sure what you said was fantastic and well said, but unfortunately, we only caught about a quarter of it. So you might want to log back out and log back in so we can make sure we hear everything you wanted to say. Sorry about that. Any other members of the committee wishing to address this matter? Mr. Labrie.
Chair Penner and Mr. Forney, thanks for this item and the forethought that went into this. Mr. Forney, can you speak to the infrastructure needs of those the call center folks and whether or not eventually that could either be done by the roaming folks that are in the garages or if you anticipate always needing kind of a call center? Or can some of that be done actually from the kiosks?
Mr. Labrie, thank you. Yes. So I think it's a combination of both just in regards to talking about having a command center plus response team members out in the field. But when it comes to the infrastructure part of the command center, we already have one workstation done. So it is two sets of computers. One is our SCADA computer. The other will be our regular workstation that we could have our camera system on to see all exits plus an intercom system that's at that workstation. We have a second one that is going in that at this moment is just missing a couple of pieces. So we're already moving forward with going, you know, having those multiple workstations in the command center. But I think that the answer to that question is it's going to be a combination of all of this. It's going to be a combination of our response team members out in the lots plus, again, command center employees here in the office. If one of our parking lots shows us that it's a response team member there more often than not, then that's what we'll do again, just to ensure that that customer service is being taken care of. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labrie. Any other comments by the committee? We have Mr. France back. Hopefully, we can hear you now.
All right. Well, hopefully this comes through.
Perfect.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Forney, for taking on this project to all of the downtown parking staff. But particularly, this is both one of the most challenging projects that we're working on and one of the most essential to our long-term financial sustainability. The item before this, talking about the challenge of even this month, you know, we're going to continue to dip into reserves because we simply can't staff up quickly enough to bring in, you know, to fully be open and bringing in revenue in all the lots is an attestation to like how important this is going to be. So thank you for that. A quick comment. Thank you to this committee and to you all for the seriousness that you're taking issues of people who would want to be paying with cash. I think that we're doing kind of our due diligence here. This is a new area. It's tricky. And I would just suggest that I think as long as we have systems to deal with issues as they arise and we can build forgiveness into the system, we're not going to be making a lot of money here. Right? So it's probably less about cash recovery and more about just the system working smoothly and minimizing user complaints and people being aggrieved. I would imagine there'd be a very small percentage of customers that might have real, you know, issues or complaints and just find, and you all are amazing at dealing with the range of our customers. And I'm sure plenty of challenging customers. And so that would just be my, my hope is I think you all are doing a great, thinking it's fully out. And then again, just having a system that's going to work smoothly for staff and for our customers when there's problems that arise. So hopefully this will be, there'll be very few of those.
Appreciate it, Mr. France. And yes, again, I think the goal is just to do this slowly. But most importantly, just making sure that customer needs are met before we move forward with anything. But most importantly, just making sure that customer needs are met before we move forward with anything.
Thank you, Mr. Newkirk.
Yeah, Mr. Forney, one other question, maybe this is like a little sneaky loophole. I'm not sure if there's like any way around this, but if you're like paying with the Swab mobile, if you're still, you know, finishing up dinner at minute 74, can you kind of close out on the Swab mobile so that you're still within the prepaid period? Can you then kind of go up to 90 minutes without and then still access it without having to pay that initial for that like extra 15 minutes? Is it essentially like, is there a potential way for someone to kind of game the system to get extra time?
Thank you, Mr. Newkirk. So the one way I think that that would be possible, and it's something that we did think about, is a customer would only be able to pay with Swab mobile if they owed fees for one. So they wouldn't be able to really access it or do anything before, within that 75-minute complimentary period. Granted, once they pay later and owe fees, we're going to give them a certain amount of time. The thought is stating and letting them know they have 15 minutes to exit, but potentially giving them a half hour to get out. And so that what that would do is that would put us in a better situation to where we're not having customers pay for their Swab mobile, maybe when they owe only $1.50, and then trying to stay two hours later and then exit and then using that ticket or their license plate number. So the system, as we've been told, will make sure that if anybody exceeds that grace period that they have, just again, from getting their car out to the column and exiting, that they would end up owing extra money. So but that grace period, again, we can determine what that is and we'll go over it some more amongst this team. But we want to make sure that there's ample time for those customers to get out and getting rid of any way for necessarily to play the system or beat the system.
Thank you. Any other members of the committee wishing to make comment on this document?
Mrs. Clark. I did see earlier Barbara Silver having her microphone come on. Ms. Silver, if you want to speak, there you are.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm curious, is there any place else that's using the system like we are trying to implement that we could look at and see what kinds of problems already exist and how they've been resolved? Or are we a brave new world here?
Thank you, Committee Member Silver. So there are different parking facilities that do pieces of what we're doing. But truthfully, I think we are kind of going to be that only system that is running it the way we are looking to do it, which is that that cashless system without pay stations or without necessarily somebody being there. Granted, again, I think we have a lot of flexibility. We really do with that idea. If things start becoming problems, we can keep somebody out at those particular lots and even accept cash. You know, if that meant somebody within the lot just being able to go and accept that. So there's a lot of flexibility in what we're trying to go moving forward. And we're most definitely going to keep those options available to, again, ensure that customer needs are being met.
Thank you.
Well, on that, Mr. Forney, I do believe, I mean, I don't know we're completely brave new world, but a number of municipalities that have paid on-street parking, I believe, I don't know, you know, some have no system at all except for I thought by phone payment. But maybe I'm wrong on that. But so, you know, the cashless issue, I think, is we've done a lot to resolve that. I think we've given a lot of opportunity. And so I think we recognize the benefits that the system will provide in the long run to our entire system. Being able to run a 24/7 closed-loop system, I think, is one of the most important parts of it. And then the ability to try to deal with costs that this system will be more cost-effective in the long run. So I think the issue of the cashless concern is a real one. And we're working on ways to solve that. And so I'm encouraged by us moving forward with this. I think the comments we've heard here are possibly more flexibility on time to pay. No service charge, and maybe it's no service charge for the first time you get a notice for cash due. But the second time you get one, or you know, there's a grace, you know, the third time you get one, you start getting a service fee. So maybe there's ways to, and that helps promote the idea of prepaid cards and whatnot that don't have the service charge. So I think we're going to be able to work through this process and understand where our difficulties lie. And I think you're doing an excellent job of trying to anticipate all the hurdles to overcome. And if I understand correctly, we're going to be working in this slowly. And, you know, it's not a hard cut over on everything. So I'm positive and hopeful that we will see the system operating extremely smoothly without much hiccups in a very short period of time. So that's, that's my hope. But let me do this. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and open public comment to see if anyone has any comments. I would like to speak to the committee on this matter.
Sure, Mr. Chair. I do see a comment from Chris Soriano. Mr. Soriano, if you can go ahead and unmute yourself. You want to go ahead and ask your question? Okay, well, if you do, Mr. Soriano, if you do want to ask your question, you can go ahead and either raise your hand or unmute yourself. I see Thomas Foley also has his hand raised. Mr. Foley, you can go ahead and make your comment. Okay, Mr. Foley, did you still wish to speak to this item? Okay, I see the hand up. You can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good morning again, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee. Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you. Thank you, Mr. Foley.
Thank you. I did listen to your prior discussion on the budget. And I understand that you're trying to deal with some very serious budget issues. I do want to speak about my concern going to completely cash this system. As a property owner with retail tenants off very close Two-State Street that use the parking garages, those garages that, you know, were put up to compete years and years ago with Luccumber Plaza by giving free parking. Now it's 75 minutes. Understood. There is a benefit to it because tourism is still a big driver of the economy in Santa Barbara. To have the people working in the booths as you exit, number one, they do give directions to people that are out of town and can point out to them things that they need to know. Second, they, it gives community service because a lot of high school and junior college kids seem to get these jobs. They learn to say thank you and good morning and begin a business relationship with the public. So that's probably a good benefit. So I would encourage you to retain some type of a cash system because it's not all people that are going to have prepaid cards or credit cards. There are some people that frankly don't have the credit to get a credit card. So I would encourage you to consider keeping some type of a cash system so people will continue to be welcome in Santa Barbara that don't have credit cards. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foley. Do we have any other public speakers?
Okay, I just want to give Mr. Soriano another chance. Mr. Soriano, if you would like to speak on this item, you can go ahead and unmute yourself using your little microphone button. Okay, I think we can go ahead and close public comment.
All right, thank you for that, Ms. Clark. So I will close public comment at this time. So I guess the direction is, I think, staff, hopefully you've, I think you understand where our concerns lie with this. And I think the most significant concern is making, you know, addressing cashless. I mean, we do know there's a workaround, but we've, we hope from a cost standpoint, you know, the machines that pay are extremely expensive. So I think we need to, you know, we're trying to balance the cost issue here. And I think you're doing a good job of that. Is the next step with this document, is this, is this going forth to council? Is there a recommendation to council? Or is this just a getting feedback from us and there'll be, you know, a further review or finalization of this?
Mr. Chair, at this time, there's no plan to bring this document to council. Again, this sort of remains a working document for us to use to sort of guide our, guide the project forward. So we can, in the future, as things change and as we do make adaptations to the system, we will come back to this committee and, you know, keep you all posted and let you know if there are substantial changes.
All right. Well, thank you. Appreciate that. And we'd like to definitely have an update as this is moving forward. This, this is probably as big an item as our budget and parking operations update. So it may be something that we just sort of need to have a touch point, at least maybe every other meeting on how we're doing, what we're seeing and what, what adaptations we're having to make to this. So and I do also give my thanks to the staff and to you, Mr. Forney, for taking on this project. It's a significant one, and we greatly appreciate your efforts. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair Penner.
All right, I'm going to move from item number eight and move to item number nine, the Libero Garage Basement Permit Policy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So for this one, I'd like to introduce Megan Salas. Megan is our Parking Resources Specialist. She handles all of our permit programs, including our monthly permit program out in the parking lots. So today, we're going to be discussing our policy and practice for issuing and managing permits in the basement of the Libero Garage. Megan will get into more details with you on this. But this is sort of coming up now because for the first time in quite a long time, we actually do have some vacancy and some availability of those permits. Unfortunately, with the pandemic and with people, you know, moving to work from home, we've had some cancellations. And so we're ready for the first time in over seven years to have permits to sell in the basement. And so we felt that this is a good time to sort of address some of the issues that we've had with managing that space and with managing the permit program down there and do kind of a refresh of our policy and practices. And so we came here today to discuss that with you. So with that, I will let Megan take it away. You don't have any audio, Megan.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, we do. All right, I'll start over. The Libero Garage is located on the 900 block of Anacapa Streets. It is unique to our parking lots because it is essentially three lots in one. The top two levels accessible by Anacapa and Cannon Perdido Streets are open to the public hourly, for hourly parking. The separate basement is also accessed off Cannon Perdido, and it is only accessible to permit holders. The public levels of this lot are very popular, and due to the location, the basement permits are in high demand.
We've lost your audio again.
We've lost your audio again.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
All right, that's interesting.
Keep going.
Just start from the beginning of this slide. So it seems like when you change the slide, it's dropping off your audio.
All right. Another feature which increases the popularity of these permits is that they are located in a private basement that is only accessible to permit holders. The Libero basement has 26 parking spaces, five of which are privately held. Of the remaining 21 spaces, seven of them are currently available. The Libero Garage permits are offered at $175 per month. I'd also like to note at this time that the published staff report listed the garages having 27 spaces, including one accessible space and eight available permits. That was an error, and there are actually only 26 parking spaces down there. I have to unmute myself between each one. Making the Libero Garage permits even more sought after is the scarcity of other permitted parking in the vicinity. The Granada Garage and Ortega Garage, which are the only other two lots with available permits on the east side of state, are each three blocks away. Our current permit management practices have created a situation where the garage is not being fully utilized for the intended purpose, which is to provide commuter parking to downtown employees. Most of the existing permits are issued to group accounts. These accounts transfer permits between employees or sometimes even sit on unused permits to avoid losing the space. Some permits have continued to be held by an employee even when they are no longer working in the downtown core. This practice leads to spaces going unused, and it's made it very difficult for employees of newer businesses to get a permit. Transferring of permits also makes it difficult to maintain accurate user records. An additional effect of the decreased usage of the lot is an increased use in undesirable uses. When the lot is empty, it becomes very appealing to skateboarders. And due to the nearby public restroom and proximity to the Marshall's Paseo, it's also become a hangout for homeless people. Our goals of the new policy are to increase permit turnover, maximize commuter usage, and ensure that our approach to permit issuance is equitable. To do this, we suggest the following policy changes. Permits would be managed by the individual permit holder rather than a business. Permits could no longer be transferred from one employee to another. Instead, a terminated permit would go to the next person on the waitlist. We would no longer allow open permits to be held, and a permit that goes unused for three months would be terminated. We would also require a permit holder to be actively employed in the downtown core. To help our record-keeping, we would number and assign spaces similar to how we manage permits in the Lot 2 basement. We believe these changes would increase the use of the lot and make permits available to new users more frequently. To be clear, none of the current permit holders would lose their permits, but they would be required to follow the updated policy. To fill the current openings, we would use a random selection process. Businesses within a one-block radius would be notified of the process and given the opportunity to submit applications. As applications come in, they would be assigned a number through a random number generator. And after the two-week application period, permits will be offered to applicants in numerical order. Applications beyond the spaces we have available would be entered onto a waitlist, again, in numerical order. As spaces open, applicants would be notified via the email address listed on their application. Applicants would then have three business days to claim their permit before we move on to the next person on the list. We would also contact applicants on the waitlist every three years to confirm continued interest. These changes will ensure that employees of any business in the area have an equal chance to purchase a permit in the Libero Garage. Anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Salas. I appreciate that. And you did a great job working through those technical difficulties.
Thank you.
Any, I'm open up to the committee for questions regarding the proposed policy for the Libero Garage Reserve Spaces. Ms. Salas, if you could put the slide back up that showed three boxes, I think maybe that helps. There you go. That's kind of the goals here. So I think those are the items if someone wants to talk to, they can address that. Mr. Newkirk, I saw your camera. Come on.
Thanks, Chair Penner. Yeah, so there's like, me, 14 permit holders right now. So we would reach out to those permit holders and just like tell them that they need to assign their existing permit to a specific individual, and then they could continue with that permit. Is that right?
Yes, exactly. We would reach out to them and just make sure that our records match their records. and clean up all of the current permit holder records and move forward from there.
And then like, have the businesses been notified ahead of time? Because I'm just thinking like, if some business has been a good actor, but they've transferred it like from one employee to another with like just normal staff turnover, now they're going to lose that ability. Because once that initial, once they initially assign it, then they can't transfer it anymore. So do we know if there's any like concern from existing permit holders on that front?
We did notify, I did email the link to the agenda and everything to the businesses that have permits in the lot. Our permits are actually, our contracts, our terms and conditions have actually always been signed with the individual, not with the business. We've just been a little bit relaxed in allowing businesses to do those transitions. So really, this is more about following our previous policy, our actual policy that we follow in the rest of the parking lots, where we do need to have permits assigned by the, the actual permit holder. So yes, we probably will have some straightening out with the businesses to do of who is actually using the permits. We'll need to make sure that we have our terms and conditions signed by the person who is using the permit and go forward from there.
Thanks. And then my question is, so it sounds like these, there may be a lot of demand. Do we have the pricing right? Have we thought about that? If there is like a really high demand, once we open up these permits, is that something we should be looking at? That if so many people want them and they're so limited, there, we might not be pricing it right?
The pricing of this permit is actually higher than any of the other permits. The next highest permit is 160, and that is for the Granada Garage and Lot Two. So it is, we did bump up the price a bit because of how kind of exclusive this lot is.
And if I could also address that comment, Mr. Newkirk, we have basically a one-time opportunity each year to address the rates. When you do that rate structure and provide it to council to, if I'm saying this correctly, and make a, make that, uh, those, those rates active. So certainly, if we see a significant push on this need for permits, then that discussion will happen when we have that opportunity to discuss rates and put it forth to the city council at that time. So I think we already, we sort of had that discussion and about this lot, and that's why it is priced the highest permit. And we'll just have to see how that plays out. My question is this. How are we confirming that it's, again, not being transferred to another individual in a company? Are we, is this by vehicle that goes in and out? What, what method do we actually have to check it?
So as part of our application process, applicants are asked to provide vehicle registration for each of the vehicles that they will be using. So we certainly can spot check to make sure that the permits are being used by the vehicles and the permit holders who are assigned to the, to the permit. We do have cameras who, that can view that part of the garage to check those things.
Well, that goes to two questions. What, go ahead, Ms. Clark.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to add a little bit on that. Right now, because of the nature of the permits with the proximity cards, as Ms. Salas mentioned, in order to verify that the correct person is actually using the card, we do have to spot check using our cameras. However, coming in the fall, we will have license plate recognition in this lot. So once we move to that system, you will need to have the license plate on file for the correct person. So it will no longer be possible for people to just hand off cards without letting us know.
That was my question was going to be, are we doing LPR at this, at this gate? So that, I think, helped solve that problem, so thank you. Any other questions of the committee? Okay, at this time, I'm going to go ahead and open up public comment with this matter.
Okay, Mr. Chair, we do have several people who are wanting to make public comment on this item. I'm going to start with Kathy Odell, then we'll go to Thomas Foley. Rhonda Henderson has also expressed a desire to make comment. She may or may not be able to get her microphone to work. If not, I will read her comments into the record. But we'll go ahead and start with Kathy Odell.
And before you do that, Ms. Clark, just to remind the speakers, unfortunately, we don't have the fancy timer that shows up on the screen like you do at city council, but I do have a timer here that I keep, and we generally allow two minutes to speak. So when you're getting, if it's getting close to the time, I will just let you know and nudge you that your time is, is near the end. So thank you.
Okay, Ms. Odell, you should be on yourself.
This is Kathy Odell. I am CEO of Women's Economic Ventures, and we have just leased space in the El Centro building next to the Libero. And one of our considerations in taking this lease was the fact that we would be able to obtain permits for our employees. I understand the, the issue here of not wanting to have people holding open permits, not having, not wanting to have people who are not utilizing this space fully. But, but to say that a business has to turn over a permit because if it's given to the individual and that employee resigns, you know, a year and a half from now, I need to replace that employee. And so I cannot run my business in a sustainable fashion if I cannot know from day to day, year to year, whether I can provide parking for my employees. So I respectfully say that I think that the objective here is having people who are employed in the downtown core. And, you know, that we should, as employers, be able to confirm to you that we have had an employee resign and that we want to take that permit and utilize it for the replacement for that employee. I, you know, I don't, I don't see any way that it makes sense for businesses. This is a very business unfriendly policy if we have to go into a random drawing every time there's a staff turnover.
Okay, I just, I just want to clarify in response to that comment. We are only doing the random drawing for the initial allocation of the permits that we have available now and to establish that waitlist. So going forward, we would just be having a standing waitlist that we would be keeping, and then as the permits turned over, we would go down the waitlist. So people who've been waiting for a long time would have an opportunity to get a permit first.
But, but what you're saying is, but, but Sarah, what I read in...
Public speaker. Yeah, we usually don't have the opportunity to discuss back and forth with staff. So I appreciate your comments, and I think staff was just responding for you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Odell. We will move on to Thomas Foley.
Good morning again, Mr. Commissioner, members of the committee. First, I agree with Ms. Odell's comments, they're very well reasoned. So I don't want to just repeat them. Second, I want to give you a suggestion because you do have a parking problem there on the weekends where people from out of town do not understand there's a second entrance on Anacapa Street to get to the third level of the Libero Garage. They back up in almost blocked Cannon Perdido Street, trying to get into the second level. From the entrance on Cannon Perdido Street, there's a sign that says full, and they just wait for somebody to leave. But from the third floor of my building, the El Centro building, I can see half the spaces are empty on the third level. So I think you need to do some public education to let tourists know, people coming into the retail center, that there is a different way to get to the top level of the parking lot, which will increase your revenue and help on your budget issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foley. Our next public speaker, please.
Okay, finally, Rhonda Henderson. You can go ahead and unmute yourself if you want to try using the microphone. If we don't hear for you in a few seconds, I'll go ahead and read your comment. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and read her comment, one moment. Okay, so she would like to say, "Good morning. Thank you, Chair Penner, committee and staff for allowing public comments. My name is Rhonda Henderson, and I am a Vice President at Radius Commercial Real Estate. I am very concerned of the proposal of only allowing individuals to purchase parking permits at the Libero lot." One moment. "It is typical for employers to provide parking downtown to their employees. I have recently completed two leases relocating both companies downtown, both adjacent to the Libero lot, and the decision to select their locations was the availability for them to purchase parking permits for their employees. This new policy would be very detrimental to the companies and their employees. To expect employees and individuals to pay the considerable cost of $150 to $200 a month for parking would be a significant financial challenge for many and could lead to them not accepting a position working downtown. As we all work to revitalizing the downtown corridor, it is critical that employees can attract and retain employees. I strongly encourage the committee to revisit the draft policy to allow companies to purchase permits for the benefit of their employees and frankly, for the benefit of our entire community in our efforts to revitalizing our downtown core." Thank you. And, and just, I wanted to take a moment and clarify, you know, per what, what Ms. Salas said before, we, we aren't going to be establishing group billing accounts going forward. However, if an employer still wants to pay on their employee's behalf, the employee can certainly specify the employer as the responsible party for the billing. So we can still bill companies for, for their employees' permits. It's just an issue of the fact that we won't be allowing them to just hand that permit off to somebody new afterwards. So when that employee leaves, we would be entering that permit back into the system so that another business could have an opportunity of getting parking there. So just want to be clear, you'll still be able to pay for parking on your employee's behalf.
Thank you. Do we have any other public speakers?
I do not see any other public speakers at this time.
Okay, this time I'll go ahead and close public comment. I have two thoughts on this to, and I certainly understand the, the concerns expressed by the public speakers. But I, from, from a staff, if staff could comment on this, if I understand, we're not changing the policy. This, we're actually looking to implement the policy of it being to an individual and not to a company. So can, can Ms. Clark or someone clarify that that actually is the current policy?
That's the case. So if you read the terms and conditions for our permits, it clearly specifies that the permit in the contract for parking is between the city and an individual person. So it's not between the, the city and the company, even if the company pays for that permit. So that agreement for parking and those terms and conditions are between the city and the individual. Again, historically, by practice, we have allowed those businesses that have been holding those permits for a long time to transfer them to new employees and, and have those people then enter into another agreement with us. The change here is just that going forward, we're going to open those permits up as they come available again to give more businesses an opportunity to actually get in there.
And, and also, I'd like to clarify the uniqueness of this garage as one of our public speakers, Mr. Foley, commented. It is a unique garage with multiple entrances. It's not designed, I would say, as a modern parking garage. And part of the reasons why we have this limited parking down below is because of the difficulty, you cannot flow in and out. And if you, there's no parking space, it's very difficult. So I recall that's part of the historical reason why this became sort of this permit parking area. So it's a unique garage, and so it's, it's a, it's, it's difficult to sort of treat this garage differently than we treat the other garages that have parking permits that we allow to sell. So it does create a unique situation for us. I just wanted to clarify those two things. At this time, I am willing to entertain a motion on these proposed policies. Mr. France?
Thank you, Chair Penner. I'd like to, a motion that we move forward with staff recommendation to, to enact our policies, our existing policies in terms of the new Libero implementation for the Libero Basement Garage.
Okay, so I have a first, and if I could clarify, I think it's to accept the, the recommendation of staff for the operation of the Libero basement. Is that correct, Mr. France?
Yes, thank you. Correct.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? All right, I'm, I'm going to go ahead and second the motion. So that opens the opportunity, we have discussion on the motion. Mr. Newkirk?
Yeah, I, I think I'm a little hesitant on this one in terms of at least the 14 existing permit holders, where I understand our policy has been to require, you know, an individual to kind of maintain that permit, not the company. But if we haven't enforced it, this seems like we're kind of cutting them off abruptly. So there's at least been an expectation established for those permit holders, whether, and I, and I know this is kind of a weird argument because it's, the terms are the terms, but we haven't enforced them. And so that gives me a little bit of concern. I could see, it's, I think it's much more easy to rationalize it moving forward, where the new permit holders are kind of eyes wide open that we're doing this. Even with the existing permit holders, if they're kind of not using their permits, we still have those, I would still apply those tools, you know, that if this, we're now going to have the numbered spaces, we're going to have the LPR, we'll have a much better understanding of it if those spaces aren't used by those existing permit holders. I'd be more comfortable grandfathering in the existing permits to have an intergroup transfer than cutting them off.
Thank you, Mr. Newkirk. Are there any other comments, Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, I kind of same, I'm a hesitation. I've been stuck in that loop. I was on that waiting list for two years once. So I kind of feel that as a business owner, you know, or a business, working in a business there. So I kind of, Mr. Newkirk's comments, I kind of echo. I feel like I understand, you know, increased turnover. I understand it's the policy, we're starting forcing it. I do feel maybe visit a way to maybe find a way to service both. Maybe you could limit a couple of the, the permits in there to be owned by businesses. Maybe it's an increased fee to have it be owned by the business. And that's just a few of my comments or thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Pratt. Any other discussion on the motion? Mr. Labrie?
Yeah, I resonate with Mr. Pratt, Mr. Newkirk's comments and reservations. And I am, I'd like to ask a question. If I understand that lot correctly, those permits are really only meant for the bottom level, right? And, and maybe staff, do those permits work if they enter the Libero on the other levels? And then the flip side of that question is the assumption that, that that bottom level is not available to the general public. And I guess the, the follow-up question is, you know, is there a creative solution whereby the permit holder, you know, is just able to use, use that permit, you know, in other parts of the lot and open up that bottom to public parking? Or if that just functionally wouldn't work? So those are my comments and my questions.
Sure, Chair Penner, committee member Labrie, I'll go ahead and answer that. The Libero, the basement is permit only, and unfortunately, we are not able to open that up to the public for hourly parking. As Ms. Salas mentioned, because of the, just the configuration and the size of that floor, you know, it just, it wouldn't work well because of the size of it and, and the traffic flow to have that be open to the public. And also, we don't have the equipment there to have people pay. We don't have a ticket dispenser column at the entrance, you know. So it really is by permit only. Again, this, this lot is kind of weird in that each level is separate and cannot be accessed from the other levels. So it really functions as three separate lots that are stacked on top of one another. So no, we wouldn't be able to make the basement permits available to be used on the upper levels, you know, because then we would be having them displacing those hourly customers. The Lot Nine, both the mid-level... The Lot 9, both the mid-level and the roof do fill up when it gets popular, particularly when they're like big sort of movie events or events at the, at the Libero theater. You know, so that's a situation where you wouldn't want the permit holders to be displacing hourly customers. We do want to keep the permit holders using just the designated basement permit only spaces. So I hope that answered your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. I want to- Go ahead, Ms. Labrie.
Yeah, sorry, I was a little slow getting the camera and the mic back on there. It kind of answers the questions, but this is the first time that this committee, as far as I know, is being asked to weigh in on this kind of focused problem. And I guess I would like to see, I'd like to see some alternative solutions that aren't so, that could be more broadly applied, that maybe, you know, take into consideration the uniqueness of this lot a little bit more. I don't know if there, if anybody has ever studied. I mean, it's easy to say at the moment, this lot cannot be converted to, you know, mixed use on the bottom level. I'd like to see that studied or at least a little bit more, you know, thought given to how we might, you know, and the follow-up there is that you'd be expanding, you know, to make that bottom level accessible to customers as well as businesses, you'd really be expanding the available customer parking, serving the, the big picture goal of making, you know, parking always available and convenient and safe and clean. So I may be beating a dead horse here, but this is just the first time that, that we've really wrestled with this specific issue, and I'm not real comfortable moving forward with the policy at this point.
Sure, so, Mr. Labrie, we can cost out what it, what it would take to put in the necessary parking equipment in order to have hourly parking in the basement and bring them back to you. I would note that because of the occupancy level of Lot 9 and because we, of our policy of not issuing permits in lots where occupancy is over a certain threshold, by opening the basement up to hourly parking, we would likely just be discontinuing the permit program in there. And so, so stopping to issue those because it would be over that threshold of, of hourly occupancy. So, but we'll come back and we will bring you the cost of installing the equipment that would be necessary in order to make that an hourly parking lot.
Yeah, thank you for that added comment, Ms. Clark.
Ms. Silver.
First of all, to Mr. Labrie, and we are very sorry about your brother. And then I wanted to say, I wish to endorse what you were saying. From what I understand, this looks like basically a lottery system with winner take all. What we say it's for the businesses, we're actually associating it with an individual. And the cost of a monthly parking place for $175 a month seems very nominal, all things considered. So yes, I would like to have more, more investigation about the possibilities. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could follow, I appreciate Mr. Labrie's comments about studying how the lot could function differently. I don't know that that precludes or has any real impact on this decision because that would be sort of a long-term, I think that study would take a while to understand how it works. So we're really just looking how to, we're really looking how to just ensure we're following the policies that we have in place. And I too, you know, have the same reservation that I think a few of you had that. There's sort of been maybe an expectation that a company can purchase a parking space and maintain that parking space forever, although we, it's still a month-to-month agreement. We do have the right to end that use. But I am concerned that this one particular lot to these one particular businesses nearby can benefit from that scenario where all the other businesses in Santa Barbara do not benefit from that policy in our other lots. So from a state matter of equity, I think it's, it's right to have lots basically from a standpoint of permits operate the same way and not have this one special garage have the, a benefit of, and I think the real issue is because we are actually now providing equipment that will allow us to know what cars are parking in there. And before, it's probably a very difficult scenario to really track who's, who's using that permit, but now we will actually know that. So that's why I feel we're appropriately addressing this problem now with LPR coming in, and I see the, I see it more being an equitable situation for all businesses. Mr. Newkirk.
Chair Penner, I think you raised a good point. I guess the question to staff is, are we going to start enforcing, like, are we not enforcing the same rule for other commuter lots in the company tran, you know, transition of the permit? Or would, and if not, would we start doing that in other lots as well? Because if we're talking about equity, like, we're, it sounds like, you know, we're really going to be a little more stern with Silveira lot. Are we with other lots as well?
Sure, Mr. Newkirk. So we do continue to allow group accounts in other lots. However, the other lots where we offer permits in have plenty of permits available. So, you know, people do, companies make changes to their accounts all the time. They call us, they say, you know, this person's coming in, this person's leaving, we make the switch. However, the difference is with those other lots, anybody can walk in off the street and buy a permit. So the companies doing that is not tying up permits and keeping them from being made available to other companies. So, you know, functionally, you know, yeah, if a permit, if a company wants to, you know, wants to pay for their employees' permits and they have somebody come and somebody go, we still require them to update the user agreement, et cetera. That agreement still remains between the, the person and the individual, you know, but just from an accounting perspective, we let them hand them off. But again, the distinction is doing that in the Lot 9 basement has kept those permits from coming available and being available to anybody for years and years at a time. As Mr. Pratt said, when he was on the waiting list before, it was for like two years. I have worked here for over seven years, and this is the first time in my tenure that we have had availability in this lot. So by not, by, by allowing the companies to retain the permits and just hand them off internally, in this, in this scenario actually is keeping anybody else from having an opportunity to get in the lot. Basically, the company gets it and then it never becomes available again. Whereas when we do that in other lots, you know, the fact that, you know, Verizon Wireless transferred, you know, employees when somebody came and somebody left doesn't keep anybody else from being able to walk into Lot 10 and buy a permit there. So I hope that, does that clarify the issue?
Yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Newkirk.
It doesn't, doesn't resolve it in my head, but it clarifies it. Thank you.
Well, it's not, again, we aren't, it's really just a billing question. So when we're, we're talking about group accounts, we're talking about companies having the permits, we're talking about who is paying for the permit. So, you know, in this case, some companies choose to pay for their employees' parking permits, so we send them all the bill, all the, we send it all together on one bill. Whereas, you know, if he has an individual account, then obviously it goes on individual bills. You know, like I said before, we can still bill companies for multiple employees if they have multiple employees who are working in the basement. It's just that the expectation would be that, again, when that agreement with a single employee is terminated, that that space would become available on the waitlist.
So to clarify, I think the theory and the, the, the policy is that permits for parking garages belong to an individual, and they can be paid for by a, they can pay, be paid by the individual or be paid by a company.
That is correct.
That's the general policy.
Right. So again, our agreement for parking is with the individual regardless of who's actually sending us the check. So, you know, as a courtesy and as a convenience to our customers, we allow businesses to group them together and to pay for them all at once, but our agreement for all of our lots still remains between the company or between the individual and the city. So, you know, the, the idea of sort of transferring, you know, like I said, it's, it's really just kind of an accounting thing. You know, for, for most of our lots, it's just, you know, they're getting rid of an old permit and adding a new permit to their same account. And it's not precluding anybody else.
So for, I guess the, the scenario that we have here is we're, we basically have a motion to, in essence, follow our policy, but to create a, an appropriate waiting system or a policy of how to allow new replacement permits. So that, we have that motion. If the motion fails to carry, then I'd like to understand what staff will do or what would be the policy going forward with permits. That's a Ms. Clark question.
So we could go a couple of different ways. We could come back if you wanted different alternatives or different types of, of management practices to look at. You know, we could, we could bring you different options. In the meantime, we would continue to hold those spaces open just until we get this matter resolved. You know, we can continue the practice that we have had in the past of, you know, allowing the companies that have the permits to retain those permits indefinitely. We do have spaces available, so we would make those available through the random allocation process. It's just, you know, again, the expectation would be that those wouldn't, you know, those, we wouldn't expect that those permits would become available again, so we may not maintain a waiting list at that point. You know, we really sort of have to, you know, sort of have to evaluate that internally, I think. You know, again, our, our existing terms and conditions and our user agreement and our existing policy is that the, the permit goes to the individual. So, yeah, so if you'd like, we can bring you back with different alternatives.
Well, I would say this, that if we're, if we're looking to maintain this, sort of the status quo from an operational standpoint, I think we have to seriously look at that in a subsequent meeting because the, the policy has been, it goes to the individual, and there's been a lax on the practice of making sure it's, it's doing that. So I, I would, I have real concern about, although I 100% appreciate the comments about wanting to know that you have parking, but I, I'm concerned about the fact that we have such a limited lot and then a business can basically purchase a space and keep it forever. I don't think is, is an equitable situation to the other businesses in the area. So I'd like to, to see the policy be implemented as it is, as the policy, I should say, the practice should follow the policy. Mr. France.
Thank you, Chair Penner. I concur. I mean, I think what's interesting here is we're talking about basically cleaning up something that we weren't, we weren't following our own policies in the past. And, and that was inequitable. And there was probably many others like, like Mr. Pratt, who were not able to, to obtain parking. And to, to the comment of Ms. Odell, a new business moving into El Centro probably would not have been able to obtain parking except for the fact that we just went through a pandemic, and uniquely, in seven years, spaces are available. So I think not being, I'm actually surprised that we're talking about this. I think from a staff perspective, administratively, they should just be making the decision to follow their policy. And I think that we should be tremendously supportive of properly implementing our policy because what's the most business-friendly thing that we can do is make sure that there are efficient use of the spaces available that are publicly owned maximally to, to business, to, to employees in that area who need them. The best way to do that is to follow our own policies. We have a real advantage in that both permits were available because of the pandemic and because now we have a system that we can actually see what's going on more effectively. And so actually, the staff recommendation, maybe it needs to come back, but is basically to implement the most equitable, most business-friendly option possible, which is effectively managing this lot to be at its highest use. So I, you know, I, I will say, I'm very apprehensive about any talk of grandfathering in us not having implemented our own policies for this lot that was holding up spaces, which have, that, that emptiness has actually even been an issue that we were just talking about. So this is, you know, this is a move in the right direction, and I, I'm concerned when we want to fall back to older practices that were inequitable and we're not following our stated policy as a public entity.
Thank you, Mr. France. Any other comments or questions on the motion? And if not, I would call for the question, but Mr. Newkirk, please.
Yeah, I want to appreciate Ms. Clark's explanation of kind of the, the lack of supply as opposed to other lots. I think that was really helpful in my understanding. You know, in hearing the discussion, Chair Penner's points and Vice Chair France's points, you know, I'm comfortable moving forward. I think grandfathering is always a kind of a messy game, and I think, you know, while I, I think it's maybe a closer question than how Mr. France presented it, I'm happy to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Newkirk. Are there any other comments or questions regarding the motion? Okay, seen none. If, yes, we already did public comment, sorry. So we will call for the question and a roll call vote, please.
Okay. Hope you can hear me. Okay, so my understanding is that the motion is to, is to affirm the policy as presented?
That is correct.
Okay. So Matt Labrie? Okay, Andrew Newkirk? Sean Pratt?
Yes, I think.
Okay, Barbara Silver? Vice Chair France? And Chair Penner?
And the chair votes yes.
Okay, the motion carries 4 to 2.
Thank you, staff, and thank you, committee, for that, that discussion and working through that process. I, I know staff will work hard to notify the businesses so they know there, this is opportunity to let their employees obtain parking in this area, and we hope it works well for those businesses. Seeing that we've run about 20 minutes over our normal schedule, I'm going to say unless there's something in program updates that isn't, is of a, you know, real important nature, which they always are, I shouldn't say they're not important, but if there's, I don't know if there's something you want to highlight or something you, you think we should drop off of program updates.
There are two things that I do want to highlight really quickly. Not much has happened on, on the SKI data upgrades, the installation continues apace, but the State Street Promenade on June 22nd, we are going to be going to city council with some proposed updates to the guidelines that govern both activity in the promenade and the parklets throughout the rest of the city. And, and that will cover how those things are operated and managed for the remainder of the emergency economic recovery ordinance. So we are proposing to make some changes, particularly in how, you know, keeping the site- So we are proposing to make some changes, particularly in how, you know, keeping the sidewalks clear, the the aesthetics and the extent to which those are required to adhere to the aesthetic guidelines that we have. You know, sort of being the two main things. So if you're interested in that, the staff report and the agenda will be published on the 17th. And we encourage you to, you know, attend that, give your feedback if that's something you're interested in. The other quick update which was requested was on the council action earlier this week regarding the sort of sanctioned encampment for the homeless, as you're all aware, and as was mentioned, a public comment at the beginning of this meeting. The city council on Tuesday considered some potential locations for an encampment to sort of relocate the unhoused individuals who are living in fire prone areas and in, you know, unsanctioned encampments. And one of the locations that was on that list was our Correo and Castillo commuter lot located at the corner of, well, Correo and Castillo Street, right off the 101 freeway. Council at their meeting voted for their sort of first choice to be for the city to pursue the option of housing those individuals temporarily in a hotel or motel. But they did vote as sort of a backup plan or sort of second choice scenario to explore the possibility of doing that on that Correo commuter lot. So that continues to be on the radar. Again, it wasn't the the consensus first choice for council. You know, so we'll sort of continue to follow that and as, you know, as that that proposal moves forward. And of course, we'll keep you all posted on how that goes.
All right, thank you. I guess at this time I need to open up public comment regarding program updates. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on item number 10?
I do not see any hands raised at this time.
Any questions from the committee regarding program updates? All right, seeing no lovely faces pop on the screen through their virtual meeting cameras. We'll close program updates and bring us to item number 11. I want to thank staff and again, I welcome to Mr. Bossi for being involved with our our team, our staff and our committee. We thank you for that. And appreciate all the good work you'll be doing for us. So again, thank you. And we don't get to talk about tides very often and peers and things like that in our organization. So may not be as exciting as the waterfront, but critical to the operations of the city of Santa Barbara.
Yeah, thank you. I'm happy to be here and I'm happy to work with all you. Thanks.
Thank you. Well, with that, again, thank you all and pleased to see that summer seems to be moving in a more normal direction for us. And we look forward to more prosperity for the downtown businesses. And as we enable them to do their business, we remind ourselves that's our goals and we continue to do that. And and thanks staff for for working towards that. With that, I'll call for adjournment. Thank you all.